Justice Sproul.
Couple of quick announcements here. On your agenda, 5.6, which is the annexation request, that's been withdrawn.
By the property owner.
By the property owner, I should add, thank you. And also want to point out that we do have a number of openings on some boards and commissions. And this is really important work that citizens do to help the council and the community. And there's two seats open on the architectural review board. There's three openings on the cable television. There's two on the preservation commission, three on human rights, and three on the recreational waterways. And if you have any interest in serving, contact the city clerk's office for an application, and there are also applications online. And then, also, I just want to mention that since it's related to a city employee, that Keith Nelson, our public works director, will be doing a program on Thursday night onboard the Cal-Fremling about our levy system around Winona. And it's a evening sponsored by the History on the River cruises by the Historical Society. And there's still some openings left. So if you're interested in learning about the levy and want to go on a boat ride, contact the History Center. And that's all that I have, and I'll ask the city manager if he has any.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. First, I want to thank Tara and the rest of the staff for the hard work that they put into the CIP, which was briefed to the council prior to this meeting. And I want to thank them very much for all their efforts and hard work in getting ready for this year's budget. And then, lastly, is a big thank you to Beanos and their staff. They've gone through our dementia-friendly training program and have been certified. And so, we're hoping to get many other businesses and restaurants to sign up and take that training as well. If anybody has any questions, they can contact Malia over at the Friendship Center.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Wozjikowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is an appeal of the decision of the Board of Adjustment by Abramson Properties.
There's a procedure for this, and we'll start with pointing out how this is going to work. I'm going to open the public hearing, and then we'll have comments. I don't have any. I don't know if legal has any at this point. You're welcome to.
Mayor, council, I don't have any.
Okay. And then, we'll give the appellant an opportunity to be heard, up to 20 minutes. Is Mr. Abramson here, or a representative? No? Well, we're going to save some time. Are there... So, there's no questions from council for the appellant? Anybody here wish to speak to this issue from the audience? I'll ask again, anybody here wish to speak to this issue? And one final time, anybody here wish to speak? Okay. I guess I'll turn it over to the city staff for a presentation, then.
Deputy Mayor and Council, the original variance was submitted in May and heard on June 7th. That variance was submitted by Abramson Properties LLC, and they applied for a variance to install first-floor residential within 100 feet of a public parking lot in downtown at 54 to 56 East Third Street. This general location here that I've highlighted on the map. The Board of Adjustment approved the variance on June 7th with the condition that four parking spaces be provided within 300 feet of the subject property. And the appeal that we're hearing tonight is an appeal of that condition. So, the focus tonight is on the condition for the additional parking spaces, not the variance itself. The property at 54 to 56 East Third Street is directly adjacent to public parking lot, municipal parking lot number one. That municipal parking lot has 69 12-hour spaces and 13 2-hour spaces. City, we did a survey in April of this year, and we found that the lot is generally full during the day on weekdays, but it opens up at night after 5:00, primarily. And there's also additional capacity on the weekends. So, the parking lot, although it is full during the day, it opens up later on at night and then on weekends as well. Per city code, the Board of Adjustment has the ability to add conditions to a variance to ensure compliance with the code and protect adjacent properties. In this case, the board added the condition for four parking spaces because the proposed building is new construction. This is in contrast to other downtown renovations and other renovations that have occurred in the same block where additional first-floor residential units have been put in existing buildings. As a result, because of the new construction, the board considered it appropriate to require parking for the first-story residential units of 54 to 56 East Third Street. As council is aware, the new Unified Development Code requires parking at a rate of one parking space per residential unit above six units. The important thing is, the Unified Development Code became effective on June 21st of this year. However, this variance application was heard on June 7th under the old code. And that old code did not require any parking for this development in this area of downtown. And that's important because the issue on appeal tonight is the following: was the June 7th decision of the Board of Adjustment to include a condition for four parking spaces in compliance with the regulations that were in effect when the variance was being considered. So, two of the primary things that would be important to focus on tonight would be the timing of the variance. Again, the variance was heard under the old code where parking was not required at all. And also, the capacity of Lot 1, which I just mentioned, full during the day but opens up at night during the weekdays after 5:00, and then there's additional capacity in the weekend as well. Council options tonight, the first is to affirm the Board of Adjustment decision with the condition for four parking spaces, so keeping that condition. The second would be to affirm the BOA decision but overrule the parking condition, so take out the parking condition for those four spaces. That's all I have.
Thank you, Carlos. Are there questions from council members for Carlos? Pam?
Since Mr. Abramson is not here, I wanted an update on how many people might be housed in that building.
Well, the total number of units, as part of this application, we'd just be focusing on the first floor. So, the total number of units, I believe, is 28, and they're primarily one-bedroom units. I think there may be some two-bedroom units. So, you're looking at, yeah, approximately 28-plus people.
Okay, so it's that plus the four. There are scheduled to be four apartments on the first floor, one bedroom.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
We also have the chairman of the Board of Adjustment, Chris Sanchez, here with some comments.
Al had a question first.
Yeah, Carlos. In his letter, Mr. Abramson talked about Point 3, which was a neighboring property to the east, received a similar variance in 2015. Can you tell me where that neighboring property was to the east? And what, you know, similar is similar, is this an exact duplication of that?
So, the neighboring property directly to the east is a building owned by Adam Clayder. And Adam Clayder was the one that submitted the variance request. The variance request, the total number of units on the first floor, or in the whole building, is 14? Or, I'm sorry, the total number of units on the first floor is 12. The total number of units in the whole building is 12. And I believe there were two on the first floor that the variance was for. So, it was the same type of variance where he received the variance because he was adding first-floor residential within 100 feet of the public parking lot. There was no requirement for parking at that point in time either, so there was no other additional parking required for that application at that point.
But a major difference is that this is new construction versus existing.
Exactly.
Were those buildings, though, also part of the, you know, if you will, the fire that destroyed the original structures?
These buildings were part of that. They have been remodeled, and so that remodel included the additional units on the first floor.
So, really, this wasn't new construction, per se, but it wouldn't have happened had the fire not happened, and these buildings, Mr. Abramson is proposing, wouldn't have happened either had the fire not happened. Just a point.
Other questions for staff? If there aren't any, I'm going to close the public hearing. And legal counsel?
Mayor and council, I don't really have a lot to add here. The only real issue is, do you want to include the condition or not include the condition? So, those are the two options that Carlos is making.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot to let Christopher speak.
I was here if you had any questions about why we... And I was there for all three variances. One of them is Abramson, too. Why we did that and how the others were rational. Any questions?
I'd like to hear your rationale for that.
Also, thank you for taking this under matter. What specific question would you have?
Well, I guess, you know, your rationale for requiring the additional four parking spaces because it's new construction.
The board, when they were making the decision, we looked at it, and prior to that, the other buildings, we had granted variances. And the specific variances, because the property is 100 feet from public parking. The other buildings were... The one that Abramson developed earlier was quite a ways away. I think it was only like a one flint he was looking for. It was 99 feet. So, that was right, kind of right there, and he was doing the construction, and we thought that was a good fit. Clayder had a couple parking spots in the back already, and he was only putting two efficiencies in there. So, the capacity he was putting in there was only like two people. We did do some conditions on his where he had some windows that he had to blank out, and there was some conditions on there also, and he met those conditions, and it was okay. The Board of Adjustments, from what they felt that what he was looking at with four more apartments was in that area, looking at the comprehensive plan, we didn't want to stop the development of it because, of course, you know, we're looking for more occupancy downtown. But we felt that some kind of parking there would be good, not only for tenants, but if he needed to park something there for long-term, or a tenant needed it long-term, or a dumpster, just something there as a resource for parking would be important there. We also felt that close to that public parking, maybe that building might be better suited for commercial lower level because of, you know, the nature of that area. So, looking at those things, we didn't want to, not we, but the board didn't want to stop the development and say no, and I think they were leaning towards that, but they wanted to give them an ultimatum, to have a little bit of support there for parking. I mean, four spots is not going to make a huge difference, but it's going to give them some space and some tools there for the new construction. So, that's what the board was kind of thinking. Happy to answer any other questions.
Are there other questions for Chris? I guess none. Thank you.
Thank you.
The public hearing is closed, so it's time for the council to deliberate. Are there any comments? George?
Mayor, I would make a motion to affirm the order of the BOA with the condition of the four parking spaces.
Paul second.
George's motion, and Paul's second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I guess we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I'm just going to abstain simply because my father owns the adjoining property.
Okay. Six in favor and one abstention.
And moving on, item 2.2 is a public hearing on the Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center nonprofit facility revenue notes.
All right. Lucy, do you want to lay the groundwork here?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this is a public hearing this evening, and the reason the public hearing is necessary isn't because the city of Winona is being used for the conduit debt, but the facility itself is located in our city, so it's called a host resolution. The city of Goodview will be considering the conduit debt for this project. And the project is that Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center is acquiring a property and rehabilitating it for their use. And we do have representatives here from Hiawatha Valley Mental Health.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if you would like to say anything. Introduce yourself and your address.
I'm here with Julie Hansen, the executive director of Hiawatha Valley Mental Health. My name is Keith Ebbin, and I've been engaged by the board to arrange the tax-exempt financing. So, we're going to do a little bit of a tag team depending on the nature of your question. It was important for us to have bank qualification, which we had to identify an issuer, who in this calendar year would issue less than $10 million worth of bonds, including our $2 million-plus issue. And the city of Winona had previously issued some bonds, I believe, for about $9.7 million, so we couldn't fit under that. Because you have jurisdiction over the site of the subject property being acquired, it's essential that you hold a public hearing. And at the conclusion of this public hearing, consider a host approval, which is an indication to the city of Goodview that on this single occasion, as your blessing and your awareness that it's issuing a bond that affects property in the city of Winona. So, that's why we're holding the public hearing.
I'm Julie Hansen, executive director of Hiawatha Valley. Lucy did a nice job of summarizing. The board, my board, has decided that we have outgrown the two spaces, the two buildings we have here in downtown Winona, one at 166 Main Street and one at 122 West Second Street. So, we've been kind of on a building search for 18 months or so and engaged in conversation with Winona Health about the clinic on Sarnia. And it seems as though it was a mutually positive relationship for both us and Winona Health. It'll give us much more space to expand and improve our services to our clients, and it'll allow my staff to be in a centralized location. So, we see it as a very positive thing.
Questions? Pam?
Yes. Are there any legal consequences for the city of Winona?
Industrial revenue bond financing for nonprofits is promulgated by Congress and is managed by the IRS and further by control by the state of Minnesota. Cities who issue bonds on behalf of nonprofits do so without any liability. You're not issuing. You're one step removed from that. You're merely saying that you're not opposed to this being a valuable project in terms of providing services to the people in Winona, and that you're not opposed to the notion that tax-exempt financing, as issued by a different city, would be a positive thing for the community here in Winona. You are not saying, you know, I should have said earlier, if I were seated where you're seated, I'd want to know, what did you do? Who's the lender? What did you do with this paper? And that is Winona National Bank. We visited also with merchants and had a competition. And Winona National Bank is a sophisticated lender. They understand that the city of Goodview will issue this note, but will do so without recourse, and that the city of Goodview, nor the city of Winona, have undertaken any kind of a review, nor do they give Winona National Bank any assurances or any notion that it's an advisable thing to do. Winona National Bank every day considers loans, understands credit, understands collateral. And Winona National Bank has brought forth that expertise, so it's a sophisticated investor. And I would happily say that the city of Winona has no obligation, and just as happily say that the city of Goodview has none. So, that's a long answer to a short question. Sorry.
If I could just add, Mayor and Council, that the entire transaction goes through our bond council at Briggs and Morgan to assure that all of the city qualifications are being met, and if there were any risk, they would let us know.
Al?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Is the existing building at 420 Sarnia, is that taxable property, or is it tax-exempt?
It's a combination, Councilman. The bulk of the square footage is tax-exempt. There's, I think, about maybe 4,000 square feet that is taxed. There's a for-profit periodontal business in the building. And then, my understanding is that urgent care, the urgent care department of Winona Health pays taxes, but I don't understand the ins and outs of all that.
Now, there's Winona Health, Winona Clinic, and they're kind of, yeah, kind of hard to understand, but they do. So, if you acquire the building, I assume the entire building, then, would be tax-exempt? Or would the periodontal or other businesses remain?
We're hoping the periodontal business remains and would be paying taxes. And I would have an 18-month or so lease with Winona Health whereby they would continue to lease space in my building for urgent care and the rehab department.
Okay. What about your existing buildings that you will be transitioning out of, assuming this goes forward?
They are both tax-exempt and will be put on the market.
For any particular use, not necessarily tax-exempt?
Correct.
Okay. As you know, Winona has a lot of tax-exempt properties, and as this council knows, we're always cognizant of whether or not additional tax-exempt properties are coming on the market and what they're going to be replaced with. So, that would be my concern, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yes.
I don't object to it, mind you, but I'm just bringing this issue up.
And just as a point of clarification, because this part can get very confusing. When I was referring to tax-exempt, I was referring to the nature of the finance.
Right.
I was not talking about the property's status for real estate taxes.
Sure.
Exactly. And in terms of what the ultimate use of the two buildings now owned by Hiawatha Valley that ultimately will be offered for sale, as you know, it depends on the buyer's and depends on the use.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Made a point.
George?
Do you not own the home behind the bowling alley?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that in association with what you have here?
I have staff housed in that building who would likely move to the Sarnia Street building. We're not quite clear on that yet.
Okay.
But they office there, excuse me, yeah. No, the clients who are housed in that building would remain there.
They'd remain there?
Yeah.
Okay. And the same services would be administered?
Yes. Yes.
Other questions from council? I guess none. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue? One last chance. Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and open it up to the council.
I would like to make a motion.
I would second.
Okay.
I'd like to approve the attached resolutions.
Okay, that's your motion.
And I still second.
All right. Motion and a second by Pam and Michelle. Any discussion? Michelle?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a great idea. It makes a lot of sense to consolidate, to move into a facility that has a lot of parking that's already set up to house medical. So, when I first heard about this through the Goodview route, I was kind of happy to hear that you were able to find a place that would work for you, and that building's ideal, as far as I can tell. So, I'm very much in support of it, and I think the downtown probably gets to be hard for your clients to get to. So, this will be better.
Okay.
Just a comment, Mayor. I support the motion as well, and I recognize that they do provide a wonderful service to folks in our community, and, you know, don't take my remarks as being disparaging. They're simply a recognition of our sensitivity to revenue. Thank you.
Well, I too support it. I think it's a great opportunity for Hiawatha Valley to grow and consolidate, and maybe an opportunity for a couple of new buildings, you know, in the downtown area to find new uses, so. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. You do good work.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, reappointment to the Recreational Waterways Commission of Adam Peterson.
Okay, cool.
I'd like to second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Carries.
Item 3.2 is an appointment to the Planning Commission of Amy Jo Marks.
I'd like to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Good to see a female joining the planning commission.
Maybe she'll bring coffee.
And donuts, or whatever she likes.
Well, it's up to her. We're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side.
I wanted to clarify that remark.
You've got her.
She runs Blooming Grounds.
Yeah, I know.
But Lucy's mentioned the donuts, everybody looked my way.
Got this response, thinking, no, I didn't mean that in the way maybe some people thought it.
You pick.
It's her business, and glad to have her board. Thank you.
Moving on, item 3.3 is an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Dave Casey.
So moved.
Question by George. I don't know if I heard one here, but I'll give it to Pam for a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Carries.
Item 3.4 is a request from Winona State University for street closures for their home football games on the dates of August 31st, September 16th, September 30th, October 21st, and November 9th. I'd like to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Al, just a question, has this been done in the past with Winona State closing Mark Street like that?
That's what it says.
So, this is something new?
I don't remember this happening before.
No?
Nope.
Well, it's not for very long, and, you know, it's during football games, understood that hopefully, maybe that will encourage students then to use the tunnels.
George?
What about the playoffs?
They'll come back for that, George.
Cross that tunnel when we come to it, George.
The whole thing will be closed.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Carries.
Item 3.5 is a request for a utility fee adjustment by Joyati Debnet, and she is here if you have questions.
Joyati, would you like to come to the microphone, state your name and address?
Okay. This is very new to me, so I'm kind of nervous. I am Joyati Debnet, and my address is 64 White Oak Court, Winona, Minnesota. It's in Valley Oaks. What happened is, I got a note on the door saying that something might be wrong with my water usage, so I need to contact the water department. And there was a phone number, and I did contact it as soon as I found that note. And then, they said they would come to visit, and as soon as they came to visit, they looked at all my, you know, walked around my house and found all my, looked at all the potties and everywhere that's water is used. And then, they found that water is leaking from my softener. And it just happened that my softener is supposed to be a smart softener, and it's supposed to detect the use of water, and it's supposed to kind of, I learned all these things later, supposed to close a flap when the water is not being used, and so the water shouldn't run. And it's a very, very silent softener. It doesn't make a lot of sound. So, when they came, they found that flap is not closed, so that means something happened with the sensor, that the water is constantly draining, and it must have drained for a few months. But anyway, as soon as they told me that, I called Calligan, and then they came and they looked at it, and then they gave me different options, and then I said, whatever you need to do, you need to do. During this whole... During this whole time, there is something else that was happening in my life and my family. That's kind of a, not such a good story, so I have to handle a lot of stuff on my own now. And so, the, the person from Caligan came and immediately fixed everything and charged me, of course. So, when my water bill was regularly about $60 or so, with the fixing of the softener and the water bill, it came about $430 or so. So, and I came to Monica and asked her if there is any way something can be done. I did talk to Keith Nielsen, I think, and both of them suggested that I come in front of you. I was very nervous at the beginning. If you want to know what's happening in my life, I'll have to tell you, but it's kind of hard. But anyway, I'm asking if, you know, something in the range of $100 or $120 or so can be excused. And I'm not asking too much, just enough that can help me. So, that's all there is.
Okay, thank you. George?
Did, did you say, ma'am, your water bill was $400?
No, water bill was about 200, but then the softener fixing was 230 or something, so total bring out to be 430 or so.
Okay.
So, so I'm looking at, I'm not asking you to pay for my, for my softener bill.
I see the water bill says 195.
Yeah, about 200, right, yeah. And I, I paid it, so I don't want to end up getting a late fee. Yeah. 195 plus 200, you, you have the bill, right?
I got that too.
Yeah.
23188 was the other one. So, total, if I have to add it quickly, it's like 427 some cent. Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Joyati? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll discuss it now.
Okay, thank you, welcome, Councilman.
Okay. I'll ask if there's a motion?
Mayor? I would motion that, and I don't know what the number is, that we deduct the sewer tax from, from her water bill.
Sewer tax or charge?
Well, the sewer char, charge.
I'll second that.
Do we have any idea of what that would be? The full charge or just the increased portion?
Uh, the full charge of the, of the sewer, sewer charge for that quarter. For that, for that billing period.
Okay. There's a motion, I don't think we had a second, did we?
I, I seconded it.
Okay, I'll second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five, two. Motion carries.
Item 3.6 is a Winona Senior High School homecoming parade street closure request for Friday, September 22nd. Would you approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al, any discussion?
Question, have we closed the street before there?
I think so.
Since 1993.
Every year.
That's when we started it. I was in, I was on the council when this first came up.
They were pulling, or my kids were there.
That's right.
Anything else? We'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 3.7 is an amendment to the faith fest agreement to allow the closure of the Northern Loop of Lake Park Drive and move to amend the license agreement and authorize them to, administration to execute.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George, any discussion? You don't want to order the name of the judge?
It didn't ask me to order you this time, believe me, Mark, I'd love to.
I think we're ready to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 3.8 is the St. Mary's University Street closure request for an event to be held at Unity Park on Sunday, September 17th. Would you approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul, any discussion on this?
I would note it's a picnic operetta. It's a new event for Winona. Sounds excellent.
Sounds like fun. All right, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You have a picnic operetta.
Item 3.9 is the Compass Church Street closure request for their trunk or treat. They're requesting use of parking lot number five at Franklin and Fourth Street and also to close Fourth Street from Franklin to Market. Would you approve that request? I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam, any discussion, Al?
Yeah, is there a, an issue, have the folks in the Eagles Club been contacted? I know that parking lot is used by them and I don't know if this would create an issue with them or not. I would hope that...
What day of the week is this?
It is a Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, well...
And we did look at a number of different parking lots in downtown and this one is the least utilized of the lots that they were looking at during the day. So, they set up in the afternoon and the event is from 4:00 to 6:30.
We'll make them aware.
Okay, it's worth, worth a try anyway, just see if it'll work and hopefully next year it'll be back in its modified new position down by the levees. George, is there something?
Now, Fourth Street, that's a truck route. I'm just wondering, is there going to be a problem if we close that block and there's trucks coming through? It's going to allow them to go down to Bay State, I know some come from River and Rail. And that would be closed and there'd be trucks coming because they come in, how, what route would they take?
That's a good point.
I don't have a problem with the parking lot closure at all, but just with that, with the street being a truck route.
So, we would need to make sure we put barricades that, ahead of time, that say truck route closed ahead, because Second Street would be their alternative, right? Second is also truck route.
Okay, yes.
Just, we do this with Main Street programs that it hasn't caused problems. When we have events downtown, they just put up the sign that says reroute truck, they just go around the block.
Because they'll be heading for the bridge, so, yeah, Second Street would be a, a good route to take because that's all truck route up to Huff and then onto...
To Huff and then loop around.
Right.
Yep.
Because that's a kind of a heavy harvest time again too, at that time of year, there'll be a lot of, and they run, you know, 5, 6 o'clock at night.
My guess is that's what the church is worried about.
Yep.
They don't want the kids to get hit.
We'll reroute the trucks, okay, during the event.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 3.10 is the Liberty Street closure request. This Liberty Street from 8th to the alleyway between 8th and 9th on Saturday, September 16th. Would you approve that request? I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam, any discussion?
Whose birthday is this?
I think he's in the audience here.
Are we all invited?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll have to notice this, if it was a meeting or something.
Must be a big deal, if you close an old street, huh?
He's a big deal.
Eddie?
Eddie is.
In September, she gets her 60th birthday. What can I say?
Oh, it'll be 60 again.
Okay, so the Pork, Pork Boys will be there, so, hold on.
We don't need tickets.
What's that?
We won't need tickets.
No, not at all.
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready to vote, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 3.11 is the Eastside Bar Street closure request on Saturday, August 26th for their annual car show.
Move to approve that request.
Motion by George, and seconded by Jerry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Under new business. Item 5.1 is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement. Would you approve?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul, any discussion?
I have a, I have just a point of discussion. Has there ever been any move to unify the bus systems? In other words, that, so, can the public ride these buses from, you know, around the circuit that Winona State, that Winona State takes? And has there, has there ever been any move to unify them so that people could ride?
Monica?
Um, yes, they're open to the public. Winona State is paying the, the cost to run these routes, so on these routes, there's no deviation, so you can't ask the bus to leave the route as we do on our other routes. And, I mean, it's a pretty limited route, they're running primarily between Lord's Hall and the main campus, so it just does a little circular route and then to the Eastlake Apartments. It, it is open to the public, but...
I, I ask this because someone who is knowledgeable about transit systems in other countries remarked that in other countries, students ride public transportation. And, and so I just wondered if there, has there ever been any move to unify the, the school buses with public transportation or Winona State with public transportation? And would there be any efficiencies to be gained there? So, it's just a discussion.
I, I would just say that, like in Poland and Japan, the city government manages the school systems, so the money that comes funneled in for transportation comes through them, so when the kids get on like the bus to ride wherever they're going, it's all the same money. And in this case, it's not. So, I think that's where the problem comes. I can't see school kids getting onto our buses to go to school.
Good point.
When there's school buses that they pay, I mean, I just don't know how we work that, but...
Right.
I, I know where you're coming from because it's very efficient, but...
Right.
The money, the school, the cities run the, the money for the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Because I asked about that when I was there too.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 5.2 is to purchase a new transit bus for the new service. Would you approve that attached resolution, or adopt, sorry?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Jerry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 5.3 is a resolution for the Minnesota State Capitol Grand Opening to be held this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul, discussion? I will be there for the march of mayors on Friday morning representing Winona.
Where are you tapping?
Where are you marching?
Say, wear your bowtie.
We're marching from the Veterans Building to the Capitol steps, I guess. I hope there's a, I hope I'm not alone. I hope there's a big crowd.
They would have canceled it by now if you were alone.
I hope there's a big crowd. We'll be there for the ribbon cutting and what other festivities.
You're going to, you're going to get a nice tour, I expect.
I would, I would expect that too. I'm looking forward to seeing the Capitol.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, big investment, so.
Yeah.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 3.4 is the Library Canopy Replacement Project Bid Authorization. Bids will be opened August 29th. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Leslie, do you want to say anything? Michelle, you have a question?
I love the mockups. It looks fantastic, it looks like it should be that way instead of the weird blue awning.
Mayor and Council, thank you. It's in keeping with the original architecture more so than what is currently there. It's great.
I've never liked the blue awning, so I'm excited about seeing it replaced and I'm glad you've taken it through all the steps for, you know, approvals from the Preservation Commission and checked with the state and so, sounds like you dotted all your i's and crossed all your t's.
We've done our due diligence.
Yes. George?
And there'll be a little patio off to the side too, as we see in our drawing?
We're calling it a learning plaza, but yes, it'll be increased seating as well as an outdoor programming space for book clubs during summer reading programming.
Okay. Uh, there was a question about, I read somewhere, the, the stone wasn't matching the building stone, what's, what's the deal on that?
Uh, that was just in the schematics that Warnikin Associates provided on the screen. He was having a hard time. The physical Indiana limestone that will be used does match the original color of the building.
And will that little patio outside, or learning area, will that have a cover over that or not?
Um, it's not in the, this phase of the plan.
Okay.
But we are looking at landscaping around the retaining walls, putting in some small trees that would provide some shade structure.
Any changes with the drainage down in there? I know there was a problem with that for, for a while. Anything going to be changed with the draining or, it looks like new doors here as well too?
Uh, the doors stay the same, George, but yes, there is quite a bit of drainage.
What is it that you're referring to, George? We don't have that document.
It was emailed.
It was emailed.
I know you've got, it was emailed.
Yeah, I, I saw an email, that's how I saw the drawings.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, the entrance, there's, there's drainage down there, so...
Pass it around. Did you get that with your packet?
No.
No, it was emailed.
Yeah.
I didn't receive it from Warnikin Associates in time for it to make your packets, but Steve emailed it out.
Wow, very nice. She's, that's quite an amount.
So, to answer your question, there's an extensive amount of water intrusion control as part of this project. We're obviously trying to prevent water from entering the building again, so there is an underground drainage that's being tied into the storm sewer as well as overflow preventer and two new drains in the learning plaza area.
Okay. Oh, I like it, it looks good, I think it's going to address that, the building, that whole area.
Anything else, Leslie? Any questions for Leslie? If not, I think we're ready to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 5.5 is a request for authorization to advertise for bids for the reconstruction of lift station number four. Bids will be opened August 31st. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries?
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Um, we'll start with George.
First of all, Mankato Avenue out by the hospital, that is due for resurfacing, you're 2024.
We're trying to...
We're trying to get it up because...
It's getting rutted.
Yes, this past, this past weekend, there was a person pushing a patient from the hospital across the intersection and they had one hand on the wheelchair and one hand like around the patient as they were going through all those bumps, so, trying to hold So, trying to hold that person in, and I suppose maybe they were seatbelted, too, but yeah, we need to get something done out there as, as soon as we possibly can.
Maybe a tunnel?
All right, we'll continue on. Good idea. There was an article in the paper about moving the movie theater from its current location to perhaps on the Hardee's block. Now, we all don't know what's going to be happening on the Hardee's block, but I thought that was a good idea, because you want to redevelop Main Street. If that movie theater was moved, you could really do a development on Main Street. Just referring to the article in the paper, and I know we're a long ways from making any decisions on that. And also, welcome to Arby's Restaurant in the Fourth Ward, and wish them well.
Paul?
Two things I want to acknowledge and congratulate, the volunteers who worked helping Lake Winona last week, doing an incredible amount of work in, in really two days, in the Iowa and Minnesota Conservation Corps. People that came and helped out. The project is progressing, and so I just wanted to acknowledge those people who put in all that time. And on Wednesday, the library is, is doing a lunch at the library fundraiser, and yours truly will be in the Dunk Tank at 12:45. So $5 for three balls. Give it your best.
Let's get some of the best pitchers in town.
I'll be wet.
And?
Yes, in the last few days, I received quite a few phone calls, no, like, three phone calls regarding goose excrement down by the lake. And it is true that the population of geese has gone up considerably. I did not, I did not look up the exact number. The goose population has, has increased considerably in this last year. The city is working on a goose management plan to take care of that, and so stay tuned. I know it was just, it was miserable down on that, that parking lot at the end of Franklin Street. It was unbelievable, so, but we're working on it.
Okay. Michelle?
Yes, so I already talked about the bike trail, just I, I had been concerned about that for a little while, and as we're starting to get close to the, you know, hopefully, a completion on our bridges, that'll be more in the discussion, but I think we should just be mindful of that wherever we put them in town. Every road is a bike road, and a car road, but when we designate them for bikes, I think it puts people in the mind that it's safer for them to ride on, so I just want to be, make sure we're thoughtful about where we put them. And then I'd gotten some phone calls about the parking study, which it isn't really a study, it's a kind of a look at parking in downtown in conjunction with the 60 Main. They were concerned that the study was being done in the summer, and I wanted to ask about that. Truly, we have more people parking downtown during the school year when the students are here, and the numbers would be skewed in the summer to only account for people that work in the summer. So I didn't know how to answer that question, Lucy. I don't know if you have a better answer for me, because you're here, but if they, they just want to make sure that we're looking at a full study of the full spectrum of people that use our lots year round.
We actually have them starting, they're going to do some very preliminary work in the summer, and then wait until school starts.
Okay, that's good. I can let the people know, because what they thought it was going to be now, and then, and rightfully, they were right to be concerned, because most of the people that live downtown are probably students and are not here.
We, yeah, we were very intentional about doing the study.
Okay.
And it should, the final report will be done in January.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's all, that's all I have.
Jerry? Pass.
Hello.